Uh, following the order, please hold on.
Make sure this is working. Yeah. Commissioner Roach?
Here.
Commissioner Haines?
Here.
Commissioner Bowers?
Here.
Commissioner Haddon?
Here.
Mayor May?
Here, we do have a form present, and this is a special meeting to look at. Approach mission goals, I will turn it over to the members for...
We have summarized the goals, and they have been, um, what's the word? Shortened up a little bit. Some were rather long. There's eighteen, I think, they're all listed there for you. There's two ways we would suggest to the commission that you address those goals. One would be each commissioner, mark each one with your priorities. One being a number one priority and something you'd like to accomplish within a year or so. Two would be something you'd like to accomplish within maybe two to three years. And a three, maybe something that would be accomplished in three to five years. So that would require each commissioner marking each and every one. The other option would be to have each commissioner mark a certain number. Say five. If you see five up there that you feel most strongly about, you put your mark under each one, or six. The number is almost immaterial, but if you want to put, just mark the ones that are the highest priorities for you, that is another option. And complicated even more, we've got a number of black markers. You can go anonymously, or we can give you each a color like we did last year, so...
We don't have black markers. Only had five green markers, and it's appropriate, I think.
Okay.
That's all I had.
If I would, could, I know that two of mine were fairly easy to implement. One, the local food policy, I was, and I think Mayor May was also approached early last year in regard to it, just to see if that could just be put on a work session. And the other one of setting up the water barrels we sell on our city buildings could just easily be implemented if, I mean, I've asked for, for almost three years, and I still haven't seen one on a building, so...
I was wondering if we could just, what Commissioner...
Sorry, just briefly.
Just with that, and the other one, I'm sorry, Commissioner Bowers, some business-friendly forum surveys, it's kind of in process, some of this stuff is kind of in process, so I don't know where we feel about trying to vote on putting it in an order when it's some that seems like it's already been kind of worked on.
I was just gonna say, I think it might be better if we do what Commissioner Haddon just did with hers, and we go around and the people who put those, kind of give an explanation, and then, I think it might be better to discuss each one of those, given that commissioner's explanation, and then do a little count. I mean, 'cause I think that these require some discussion. For example, recreational activities, I think that needs some discussion. I think all of them need some discussion, and especially the, without the utility fee. I think before we rate that, we need to have some discussion about what possibilities that might be, and I would just prefer to be adults and, and just have some discussion, and then do a hand count as to how many people think that's important, because I think we can, as Commissioner Haddon said, some of those, we can just automatically do without making it a big, huge deal. And then, there might be some that need some more discussion. For example, before I could say that's important to me or not, I need a little bit more information about what you're talking about, and what Mr. Zizov thinks some approaches might be to accomplish that, before I could rate anything, so...
I'm with Liam.
Right.
I think that makes sense, and some of these will be able to move toward a work session, or won't even, we may decide they're just not possible, so I suspect it wouldn't surprise me if five or ten of them get eliminated, or get moved to something.
Right. Or just automatically get done.
Right. I think that makes better work. Everybody else?
So you just want to go down?
So I got the first five.
Local food policy? You already said that, and...
So Commissioner Haddon, you said that's gonna move to a work session, right?
That was asked, and I brought that up in the email I sent to Tim, as well, was to just kind of have that on a work session.
Can you kind of explain that? I'm law.
Yeah, I have, um...
Is this where we're sort of promote certain types of foods, or...
Yeah, and just, um, help our farm industry here, and try to get more local foods, especially in our school systems, and the community gardens aspect, and just have them come and give a presentation, so that all of us can be on the same page of what kind of policies could be set. They set them up in several cities across, across America, and see if we need to work more with our community gardens, or is there something more that they can do, or if we, if there's policies that we should look at even setting.
I think that makes sense to do it on work session, if you're there.
Okay.
We're gonna mark it up and put work session, just to make sure how we're doing.
You can do that?
Here, Tommy, you're closest, you wanna do that?
Here, no, he's green.
Oh, that hit too many back to choose.
I got green!
We got green now. We can do purple.
You know what yellow is close enough, pardon? It's kind of a green.
Shark tree.
And I guess, Commissioner Haddon, when, what work session, try to have it on?
Um, April is Earth Day, but I know, but April's what? Earth Day's at the end of the 21st of April, so I didn't know if we could do it in May.
I'll do it in May. We are, we are getting the...
Do we get a copy of this for everyone, too?
Sure.
If I can just keep, oh, make sure I get that one back.
Do it.
If you don't mind, or Alex, or...
I'm worried, Paul, still may could do it, so I can...
Or Alex can do it.
I can delegate my change.
All right, you can choose to do it.
Did you do all of yours?
No, I have not.
She's going next.
So the annexation feasibility study, and again, Tim and I kind of talked about this, there's some streets within our city that are in the same neighborhoods, as some that are in the county, and when I first took office and elected in, this idea was brought up to me, and I don't know if it's worth looking at to increase our tax base of the city, or not, so...
If you looked at the process, legal process, annex...
I took one of the legal city classes, showed up, and they did a thing on it, and I have a handbook for what the process is, but I didn't know if it's something you want to explore, if not explore, then just exit out, and we can move on.
Can I ask you a question? I, I've looked, don't know what, like you did, going to a class, but I've looked at it some, and looked at the policy, and I guess the question I always come back to is, besides a unique situation, such as out there where the development is...
New development.
New development, brand-new development, where there's only one owner, or two owners, I'm puzzled as to why anybody, 'cause, was it fifty or fifty-five percent of the residents that are in an adjacent area that's in a county, if they, if they're against it, it can't go.
Right.
I'm, I'm trying to write my brains as to why anybody would...
Want to do it?
Yes.
They probably won't want to do it.
If they don't, then, then it...
But it's the only way that the city can look at expanding its tax base, for us to look like that we grow on paper. If we look like we grow on paper, then it looks like more businesses might want to come here and develop, 'cause it looks like we're growing.
I agree. So maybe you could identify, not only those, like I said, I think neighborhoods is gonna be a hard sale, but maybe if it's...
Any new development lands?
Yeah, maybe it's something like that, that might be different.
Or even tying into sewer, where the sewer's gonna expand to.
I think we've been for a year looking for that piece of paper from the 1970s, you know, the thing where, where there was an agreement that if you got new sewers, you could be, I don't know, Tim knows that better than I do, we can't find it, though.
Yeah, the city received federal funding. There evidently was a letter about 1990, and that was in the 70s, about 1990, 91, I think there was discussion about an annexation in exchange for extending sanitary sewer. And that letter, at that time, indicated that it, the city was to be considered a regional sanitary sewer system, and could not exchange. The question that I would have at this point in time is, how long is the shelf life of a letter like that? I mean, the last time we saw anything was about 1990, 1991, or 1992. So, I think that there is a question as to whether or not the city wants to extend any further sanitary sewer beyond its corporate limits, because once you do, you've reduced all incentive for anybody to want to annex.
Good point.
Well, then I think this is probably something we need to look at, it sounds like there's several pieces to it.
And if anything, we can at least figure out if, where there is to annex further for longevity purposes, new development.
And maybe we could get, is that part of our 201 plans?
Our 201 plan does not address corporate limits in any way, shape, or form.
Okay. It addresses our service.
Now, for clarification, before we hear two findings, we just on number two. I see this, I guess I've looked at, I look at things like one year, two years, three years, five years, and I see this is gonna be something that's gonna take...
The study won't take that long.
It won't take as long as you think.
The study won't, but I think ideally what we need to get first is information from our staff regarding if it's worth trying to do a feasibility study, or...
I agree with that part, if I can give you information.
And if, and if it's worth even discussing anymore.
Okay, babe. So, if, to get back to your point, Commissioner Bowers, if, is the way you see this process going, if we're all fine with going, okay with it, then we just do it?
Then I think Mr. Zizov could determine which ones he can attack, like, in the immediate, and you can prioritize the time factor, I guess, that's what I'm thinking. I don't know.
Well, you can just, you can get a report quickly from them to show the benefit, and look at the benefits of annexation, in terms of residential annexation, which doesn't typically bring in much revenue versus commercial industrial, which brings in a lot.
Could we, could we kind of do the, since I've got a little bit of a micro-management streak in, it's a shock, could we, could we kind of note immediate, or like...
Within six months?
Yeah, from our perspective, not that I don't trust Tim.
That's, I think the purpose of the goal setting is for the commission to provide direct to staff.
I would want that one done.
Right now?
Well, yeah, you know me, but obviously that's not the way, so what do you ever y'all think?
I think giving information...
Right now.
That would be, because I think that would provide us how we should move, that is the solution.
Six months? Four months? Get back to us, within, within.
How about by June 1st?
Again, if you were to use as a number system, a one is in the next 12 months, a two would be in the next two to three years.
Okay, one is next 12 months.
How about one?
Can we do one? Can we do the next six months, 'cause we'll, we might not be here in eight months, or 12 months.
Can we make a one, could we compromise and make a one six months?
Yeah.
And a two a year, and a three more than a year?
Depends how many ones you get.
Okay, well, you know us, we don't gonna have a lot.
We want to do everything.
So that's a, that's a one, right?
So one would be six months, maybe? Two's 12? And three's more than a year?
You got a lot of ones.
All right.
Yeah, I'm a whole lot.
Um, I think the next one is, is still being worked on.
What Gary's doing, isn't it?
Mm-hmm, yeah, he is doing it. So that one's already in process to get information back to us, and some of that was just still going back with the Second Street Task Force, that was removed with the staff to take over that aspect of it.
So with that one, could we take that one off, since we're doing it?
In process, I mean, you could just even...
Okay.
All of it in process.
Get rid of, she doesn't have much to do.
Wire up there, Mr. Haines? The next one is, again, fairly simple, if the rest of this commission agrees, and if staff is fit, that we can go ahead and try to get some barrels. Now, with the water as well, can be used to water the plants with the beautification of downtown, especially when those hot months start coming in.
You can do that right away.
Can I make a comment? We did check on this about the last summer, and the feedback that I received from our park department was that the size of a barrel doesn't produce enough water for the type of watering that we do. Most of our is a larger quantity, so the barrel itself, while it saves water and creates a good image, isn't very efficient for us. We might be trucking water from one park to another, or whatever, and that was the feedback that I received when we...
So you wouldn't save water, save energy, increase your costs?
You may not. To have one outside City Hall and functional, it makes some sense, but how do we water the plants?
Well, we get water, we pump water out of the cold spring. We didn't water much last year, obviously, because it rained all the time.
Rained all the time.
We also go, we also go to the sewer department, some bills of fluid water.
But you're handling it in bulk?
Yes, 300 gallons, so if, you know, 50 gallon water barrel, I mean, you're out, and you're still gonna have to use water, you're gonna have to get water someplace else.
That was the issue.
It's easier timing for us to fill up a 300 gallon water tank. Of course, the golf course, we use seven million gallons sometimes, so...
It's a lot of barrels.
But, you know, I think it could be used somewhere, but it wouldn't, for us, if we water, I mean, we might fill up...
Okay, so that's not gonna work.
300 gallon water.
How many barrels have we sold? Do we know?
Off the top of my head, no.
Uh-huh.
I can get that information now.
I mean, 'cause it's something that we're trying to promote, we might as well promote it on our buildings, even if we can't use the water, maybe, maybe some other body down the, somebody down the street might be able to use the water.
The neighbors around could use it.
Right.
Could you, could you let the commission know, build places where staff thinks it would work?
Yes, yeah.
And then we, and then we...
Nope. Well, like, if you have a facility that's a city building, and it's reasonably close to neighborhood, you could just have a sign, citizens feel free to take the water, or something.
Right, or if some of the fire stations are growing, they're on gardens, maybe they want to use...
Yeah.
Yeah, but there has to be some kind of, something to let people know, maybe they can't drink that water, 'cause you...
Well, that's true.
Yeah, we can't let anybody have that water, 'cause then we're gonna get sued.
I mean, if you get homeless, people drinking water, I mean, I'm just saying, thinking out outside the box.
No, we don't want to do it.
I don't plan, but if somebody drinks, it can get sick and die.
They can use it for showers.
You think they'll be bathing out there?
I think homeless would.
The government is...
Like a homeless...
Well, can we still look at the places that we can do it, so...
Yeah, there's probably some...
Couldn't you put like a little spout on it, and let them just...
We could take that off, since we're doing it.
We'll get a reporter, we'll get...
Put a big check now, check marked.
You can at least put one here in front of City Hall, right? Put that up, and water the flowers.
I said, I'm not sure what to use, but I might have.
Yeah, you did a good job, anyway.
What are we doing, the barrels? What are we, did we set a one?
They're all checked.
He's gonna check to see if there's some places that we can do them.
Oh. It can just kind of be implemented, seriously, so... My next one was for set up a plan for extreme weather conditions, secondary to the fact that Kentucky now has some of the coldest winters and longest winters, and we also have some of the hottest summers, and to keep Mayor from getting almost 3,000 emails, maybe just trying to set up a plan, so that citizens know, and that, that the staff know, and so we can tell people who call us, here's a place where we can take them, animals or humans, that we have certain shelters set up for certain extreme events.
Don't, don't we have plan for people, for...
Not that I know of, I mean...
We got, we got it from emergency management when there's...
From emergency management, there was this times that the days were...
You could probably make it better.
But they said, you know, you could, where we're housing, we've got shelters at A and B, could...
Yeah, they have that listed, but if, the animal thing was not fully addressed about, the chief can tell more, about folks, the folks that were asking us were wanting the city pretty much to go and, what do you think it would be, like, sort of going on people's property and paying...
Impacting their animals and taking them to a safe place.
Right.
I'm not interested in that.
During an emergency, which, I mean...
Right, and I know, but at least have something written.
It would be a lower priority in an emergency, I would think, that we would have other emergency things to begin with, but also, on the other hand, it was kind of an informational thing, it's so cold that, you know, don't leave your dogs out.
Right.
Of course, it would depend on the dog, a husky would probably enjoy the cold weather.
Right. Little chihuahua?
Chihuahua out in this weather. Kind of need to do what we do have, though, 'cause something must be working, other humans, you know, they have those places over there, that if they can... If you don't mind, I think our emergency operations plan are very clear about that, you know, when there's an emergency, say, say in the wintertime, when there's electrical outage, there's a certain level we determine that we need to open up warming centers, and things like that, emergency management is, is on top of that.
I think that maybe a way to help this...
The center's always the same.
Well, they change, sometimes. I think, I don't know what's posted on the regular city website, so that may be, and like I said, I don't know whether, but most of this is done by nonprofits, you know, some of this type of stuff, but, you know, we had those couple of places open, I don't know if it was just in that email that we got, or if it was something that was on the city's website, or something like that, I don't know.
Well, one, one other point to that, the emergency management website probably needs to be linked closer to the city website, rather than, I mean, it's a separate website, separate web address, and if someone had looked up City of Frankfurt, they probably wouldn't have been able to get that information, so it probably needs to be linked to the city website somehow, at least in one of those panels on the side, or something.
Yes. Yes. And to me, the reason I put it, seemed like the buildings kept changing, it was Home Street Church, or Western Hills was where people could go if they needed warmth in the cold, not just, uh...
Oh, yeah, those were warming centers and not shelters.
Yes, but sometimes in the extreme heat, it could be cooling centers, and I don't know if those buildings are gonna stay the same, or if we just need to have one of the nonprofits, if we just know who to contact in that.
It should be, like, they do have a protocol, we gotta say that.
Right, but that, you know, us, our plan doesn't preclude somebody like a church or something opening their, their services up to the neighborhood, and, you know, it would just be more of an education thing for us to, or for them to let us know, so we could get the word out.
Yeah.
Because they don't have to go through us in order to do that.
True, right. And education on my half in it, too, I guess, um, yeah, I mean, when I went to school in Florida, it was always, if there was a hurricane coming, everyone knew exactly what building to go to, which was gonna be the hurricane center relief, relief stand, and I just, if there's gonna be something that's concrete, at least have one thing that might be concrete for people to either contact in order to know where to go, versus just having one, one simple building.
And like clarify.
Clarification.
Okay, power bear?
Yeah.
Right, there's my five. Six. Reduce overall personnel costs. That's yours, isn't it?
It's gotta be mine. When do we, when do we want to have that clarified, Tom?
Oh, the extreme weather stuff?
Right.
We could just send something across to Tommy's office, but Jeff and Mark Woods, Jeff thought and Mark Woods should be able to pull that, because typically, the red cross is the part on the annex, there's the emergency personnel plan is broken down into annexes, or tabs now they call it, and the one on emergency shelter, there's a whole section, we need to pull that out, and you can, you can make suggestions, if they think something's been missed, 'cause it's, it's always like, that's a working document that changes, somebody brings in a better idea, and they, they have to update it annually.
Thank you.
So you want that, a tab, at least, you know, tabs, and it should have all the contact information on it.
Thank you.
I think we know who the next file are.
Yes, we do. We know who this one is.
Yes, ma'am, and the next file report is similar, so, yeah, they're, they're all mine. Same, that personnel cost, same one I had last year, same reason, which is, is our, is our overall revenue doesn't appear to grow much of any, if you don't take, I believe if you don't tackle that a little bit more intentionally, then, then you end up not being able to control the cost, and then you end up having to lessen money that you spend in other places, like equipment and things like that, so...
Well, my thoughts are, I don't have a problem with the goal, as long as we're not cutting positions. In other words, if there's a way to do that through some sort of lowering of benefits, benefits cost, or benefits to unemployment, that's right.
Yes, ma'am, it would be retirement, health insurance, other benefits, and salaries, it's total compensation.
Because when you, when you cut positions, what you actually do is you pass on the problem to another level, because you're gonna deal with unemployment at another level, and it's still coming out of the coffers of the taxpayer. So I, I think that, well, at some level, at a different level it is, because you've got to do something about that problem, so I think if we can keep as many employees as we have employed, and find that 1% through whatever it is, a benefit, something where we can reduce the cost of benefits, or, you know...
Yeah, I'd like to see where we are now, because from what I've read, we've reduced the health insurance, I don't know if it's 1%. We've just personally, below, what they've been authorized in the past, it sounds like we're already doing some of this, we just don't have, Mr. Brooks says, unintentional, and I think that's what, he had written on a previous one, that we do something intentional over a four-year period, 'cause when I, when I look through the things now, I do see the numbers pulling down, I just can't equate it to, okay, is this trend gonna continue, or is this just happening right now? Because, you know, we have a lot of people that retired, changed job positions, so I can see what, where it's going, because we do need to, that is the biggest chunk, and that's not gonna change, that's the biggest chunk that I'm looking, so we do have to take a look, as painful as it is, we have to take a look at it and make sure that we stay in some kind of line, that the other things won't matter, because if that thing booms up, we can't, we can't just rest of it.
Well, so you said that one-half million dollars, we're down one-half million dollars since last January?
Approximately, you know, health insurance.
The health insurance.
I'd say from about last July.
So we don't know what, but we already are implementing that, basically.
I would say yes, to some degree, we are continuing to tighten our belts.
Mm-hmm. We decided last year, didn't we all think...
Well, we did, but, just say a couple of quick things, the but part, if you don't, what happens is, and it just, all of us, all of us, all of us have different biases that we come from, but for example, if, let's just say next year, the, we're, somebody gives us an idea to raise wages 3%, I'm gonna make up a number, and let's say our overall compensation costs are $22 million, well, we've just eaten up the 500,000 and spent an extra 160,000, which would, which would tip up a little bit our percentage, like, for example, when taxes were raised year before last, all of that was eaten by the added costs of garbage cost and increases in wages. So, if you're, if you, if you believe we need to reduce personnel costs, if you believe that, you're not, I don't believe it's possible to do it with, our retirement costs are somewhat fixed, they're fixed at about 18 to 19 and a half percent of salaries, Steve can jump in, and that's supposed to be leveled the next 20 years, so the only thing you can do benefits-wise, unless you get into the weeds with the hours and how it applies and that kind of stuff, is the health insurance cost, and they're just not, we just made a big adjustment last year, I can't imagine that we'd want, we'd be taking on that again, so I think that leads you to attrition, which is, you're right, in the sense that that sometimes shifts things, but most of the time it doesn't in government, because when we lose, use attrition, it's largely we're not filling a job that somebody is leaving, so you don't fill the job, it's not like you've cast somebody into unemployment, you know, I think for the most part, we're not down here to cut jobs, in the sense of people that have a job that they're not retiring from, I think there's a chance in the next five or 10 years we'll be there, but, but the attrition is, you just don't replace the job that somebody is leaving.
Yes.
Yes, I understand that, but, and that's, I mean, if the job is no longer necessary, in other words, if there are people spending two hours of their eight-hour day with not much to do, that's one thing. But if people are using all of their eight hours to get the job done, and then somebody leaves, so you're going to overload the rest of the people in that area with extra work. In the long run, you pay for that, because you have burnout, you have stress-related injuries, just stress. So, you know, you pay for, when you cut people out of their jobs, you pay for it indirectly within the organization, but you also pass the problem on to the next higher level. And so I'm just, you know, if you said we cut a half a million, and I agree with you, if we can, if we can target 1% a year, but if we can incrementally do something with the health, the health insurance and the benefits.
Well, I think we've hit it. I don't think there's a whole lot more to do.
We've done it, we've done it now.
We have to get more people in the place.
If you can figure out a way to do it without cutting jobs.
Then it can be done.
But the thing about it is, the people are what's important to the organization. So when you go accent positions through attrition or whatever, basically what you're saying is, the people are the less important of our assets. And I just don't.
No, what I'm saying is, two plus two is four. And if 72% of your costs, or 73% of your costs are personnel, and, and you want to get a handle on that, and you want to have more money for other things, you have one or two choices. You're either going to have to lower personnel costs, or you're going to have to raise taxes. Now, we're in pretty good shape right now, so I'm not saying this is imminent, and I know the city manager would echo this. I'm just saying that if we are going to lower personnel costs as a percentage of the budget, I don't, I don't see any other way to do it.
You're talking about the upfront, visible, in-your-face costs. But there are indirect costs that you don't see when you overburden left people that are left after someone leaves, that in the long run end up costing more. So I'm just saying, I don't want to cut positions. That's just, but I mean, if there's some other way to do it, I mean, if, if our city manager or our department heads see that people are spending eight hours and they're having a lot of sit-around time and they're not doing much, then if somebody leaves in that department, absolutely cut it. But not just for the sake of, we're not going to fill vacant positions just for the sake of doing that, unless we can justify that we were overstaffed to begin with.
Well, Dana, I think what you'll find is, they, they've done, generally, department heads, et cetera, when there's a position to be replaced, they look at it and see whether or not it's one that could work with attrition or not, and then they make a recommendation, the city manager sits down with them. So they're not just willy-nilly every time, if it was that way, then we wouldn't be hiring all these new people to replace the people that were leaving.
Well, I'm saying, it's, it's their call, it's the department head's call, but I don't think that that should be just something set in stone. Without them using their subjective judgments, because also, the people that we serve are going to suffer. Because if you have stressed, burnt-out people, because they're doing their job plus one-fifth of the job of the person that left, eventually, that's going to be felt by the taxpayer, by you and me, and by the rest of the department. So I think that we have to be a little, I agree with you on the 1% in the next four years. I'm just saying, I think that that's going to have to be the call of the department heads and the city manager. And I think if it comes down to choosing between meet the 1% or not meeting it and having the job done well and keep the organization intact, that we're going to have to be more flexible in the way that we find that 1%, all I'm saying. But I agree with you on the goal.
That would be about three employees per year?
Three employees per year? So I'm, what I'm saying is, let's not just look for three positions through attrition and not fill them, just, just to say we did.
If your figure's 50, I'm, I was figuring, he said. I was thinking about personnel. I was thinking, maybe the employees.
Maybe Steve can jump in.
Just, just one comment on that area. I think the key to this, this whole point is, we don't wait till somebody, you know, walks out and then tries to say, we're not going to fill that position. Just every day we're here, we need to continually look for areas that where there are inefficiencies and we can be more efficient. So that when you do have somebody leave and say maybe one position, say we've lost three positions, but one of them, possibly we can not fill through attrition, because we have become more efficient in our operations. Just for example, like, in my area, you know, what we're trying to do is, we're trying to work, we're trying to create an environment where we don't have handle as much paper. You know, so maybe it is possible, we could, in, in the future, you know, if somebody left and we became more efficient and we, you know, we weren't sitting POs around to be signed by, you know, by each department. Maybe it is possible to, to kill one position in the future. But, you know, that, that has to be done every day when we come into our department, trying to be, become more efficient so that we can, you know, because it's, it is hard to turn the faucet off, you know, and say, I'm not going to fill that position if you haven't become more efficient, you know. But I think that's the key, is we just, every day we look for more efficiencies and we try to be proactive. When that, when that person leaves, you know, can we not fill that position? It's an ongoing process, is what I'm trying to say.
Actually, I like that process better, that's something we should be doing.
Yeah, that's what you should be doing as a manager.
And you also, you provided us with a thing on the computer where you could plug in.
Yeah, sure.
And that particular thing, it didn't look like it changed our budget much when I took people out.
Well, we were taking, we were taking out on both ends, we were taking out, our revenue wasn't going up very much. We were trying to give a raise, and we were trying to take people out to offset the raise, is what we were trying, what I was trying to do. And if we, you know, we have to take some out to cover for, you know, raises or otherwise, all we'll be doing is paying personnel costs, as you said. So that's what, that's what that, that model was doing, you know, is, where can we, what can we afford to do in a raise point of view, you know? And what, you know, what would we have to do on the, you know, attrition side to, to offset that? Because, you know, Commissioner Roach said, the revenues aren't coming in too strong.
Now, how would the, how would staff, you know, you know, you always say you want diversity. If, if this becomes a goal, let's just say we reduce the personnel costs by 1% next year. Not even think about the four years next year. Is that when you all, you know, would that drive you to stop looking at these efficiencies that can happen?
You're already doing that, right?
Yeah, we should, like I said, we should be doing it, but, you know, for example, one thing that y'all pointed out, pension costs, hopefully they're going to flatten out, and that should help some of these costs, because, for example, we're seeing pension costs for next year go down about, what, 5%, 6%? Tim and I was talking about that this morning.
From well over 18 to under 18.
Yeah, so hopefully we can continue to see some trends like that, and that'll help, you know, that same area. And if we can see some improvement in behaviors as far as how we spend our healthcare money, you know, that can help. You know, so it's not just totally manpower, it's, it's a combination of all three of those things that, that can help this, this process, so.
So can we look at, agree to look at it in combination and touch, or try to reach it, not just the, the death of the business?
No, I'm fine with everything everybody says. I don't think we, anybody said anything any different.
It's just a continued process.
Might have been nicer, different ways, but I think it's all about the same thing. So how, when do you, when and what?
Well, in one year, so, each year or so, what, say in December?
Ask them what's the best, how best way to do that is.
I mean, we'll, we'll continue to look at the ratio and tell you what it is as we do the budget. You know, we're going through the budget right now, so we'll, we'll see where we are, makes it on where we were last year.
One and ongoing.
One and ongoing.
And we may look at it in some departments.
Up here, ongoing.
Cannot operate with the reduction.
Yeah, that is true, but.
That is true.
It's true.
All, I'm just saying, in a, in a broad sense, something has to happen, or you're not going to be able to do this other stuff, or you're going to raise taxes, so there aren't a whole lot of options. Anyway, go to the next, and that's enough. We're kind of doing that one, so, that might be like what Commissioner Head and some of her, and that is, we're pursuing collections harder, we're doing foreclosures, and we're tearing buildings down in order to increase the value of everything. So I think if we're comfortable that that's occurring, then we probably could just draw a line through it. Or ongoing, have.
In process, like that?
Okay, in process.
You got ongoing, you got in process.
I think that's all the same thing, but whatever you want to put. Yeah, they'll, they'll make it.
That's right.
Looking good.
The power.
Power depends.
Okay, of course, the next one's mine, sewer, Bill. I don't, all the things that Bill does are kind of overwhelming. I go to those sewer meetings most Thursdays at Rob Moore's office. And the amount of things they're into, and the amount of uncertainties in their future costs, all those things make me nervous. And so I would like for us during this year to get with Bill and Tim and other staff people if possible to get a, to maybe get a better handle on where that's going, and see if there are ways that we can reduce costs. And we, and we are working on lowering future increases. I think we're trying to bond things like we did, we approved a couple of months ago, which spreads the cost out. And then I'd like to be prepared sometime when this is over, 2022, 23, or 24, depending on, and given the response time of the state, I'm beginning to think it'll be 2030. Be prepared at one time to not have the highest rates in the state, or the second highest, and maybe to be getting them down. So that's kind of a long-term goal.
But you're asking to review all the aspects, so is that something that maybe, Mr. Scaff, you would want to meet with the whole commission and, and look at each aspect, see if there's points?
If there's anything we can do that he hadn't done, I'm sure he's done most everything.
I mean, what?
It's your pleasure.
Well, let me ask you a question. If you came to, like, a work session and went through every aspect and, and looked at all possibilities, is that just like, is that?
How many hours you want to spend?
Oh, no, you've done, well, you've done this before, back when we had to do the separation. But is that something that you think would uncover any, that is a group, we could uncover any places to save? Or do you think that's just another presentation that's not going to accomplish anything?
I believe it would have to be so broad that it wouldn't really answer the question you're looking for. That would be my belief. It's, it's not deep enough in the trench. But we can, but we could work on something to, with the city manager and I, we can, we can work on something and see if we can address that maybe a little bit better.
Whatever they think.
Do you think you can do it all in six months?
I mean, I think they can start working on it tomorrow, but I don't think it can get implemented. We won't see results for another year or so, would we?
Oh.
I might be wrong, but.
We, we could probably get back with you in six months. I don't know that we'll have an answer in six months, but I think we can get back with you in the next year.
Have a game plan.
And then with a game plan, exactly. Okay. Okay, so is that a one?
Yeah, it sounds like it's six months. Because the numbers are based on timeframe, right? That's my understanding.
Back to the day this all used to be under the sewer board.
Can we do the next one, Commissioner Roach?
Yeah. It might be too early for that one.
It might be too early, but I would love to see us be able to do it without a stormwater fee. I would, I don't know if we can, but I like the idea of saying.
The only thing is, is there a way to still get the state property? If we don't, that's the only way we can.
Fee them, to get taxes.
That's the only way that we can help, have them help share the costs of what they're using. Rob Moore's not here, but there's not another way to do that, right?
I don't know that there is, other than utilities. But utilities, the only mechanism that a city can use that allows you to charge a fee for the services that are provided. I also, you know, we talked about this briefly, and the staff has put together some information, but we would estimate the annual cost of projects that we have to do to get our NPDES permit, to do the maintenance, to do the billing, and that's $800,000 to $900,000 ballpark. If you're wanting to do that out of the general fund, we're talking significant cuts. In number, reduce overall personnel costs, I mean, if, I heard the commission say they're comfortable with a percent. We're talking significant.
Bigger percent?
We are talking about, I mean, there, there are actions that are maybe far out. Close the golf course, that saves $150,000 a year, because that's, the, the current swimming pool is costing us about $150,000 a year. Sanitation, you know, we pick up the leads every year. We do a number of things that could be trimmed to handle that, but you still don't address the, the issue of.
The state.
Everybody across the board contributing. If everybody contributes, you reduce the amount that everybody pays.
Well, of course, that's accurate, but it, but if, but if it comes out of city budget, then nobody's paying it, except, except the, except the people here.
Correct.
And it's, and it's, you're right, the state, you do shield the state from it, and I think that what they, what they pay would be, that's off the top of my head, 15 to 20 or 21%, is what the nonprofits pay. I think if you take all the nonprofits into account, it's going to be 25%, but I don't have that stuff in front of me. I'm fine if we want to just, that's coming up on us. It's one of the reasons I put it on here, was because it was coming up on us. I don't think the county has determined what they're going to do. I think we're negotiating still on a price for the next stage of engineering, and then we'll have, it'll probably be close to fish or cut bait at that time, as to whether or not you want to do a stormwater utility fee or not, because that probably is going to be in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. So if you're for it, that probably means you're going to want a stormwater utility fee. If you're against it, that's probably going to mean you're not going to want one, but want to do it internally. So I think that it's getting close.
We anticipate bringing the engineer's proposal to the April 14 work session. So as Mr. Commissioner Roach indicated, we are negotiating, and I did see a proposal, I think, in my email, I haven't read it. We met with the engineer over a week ago, two weeks ago, nearly, and we are working on a fee for the final, basically, the final phase.
So this may be one that doesn't need to be up there at all, if it's something that we're all going to face in the next two or three months, that we're going to have, each of us are going to have to make a decision about it. But, but I think the city manager is right, it would take, I don't think they're going to close the swimming pool.
Not on the brown house, I mean.
But I do, but I do think that it would require much more tighter measures than anything we've ever contemplated down here. But, but on the other hand, you're going to be asking various entities in this town to pay, some of them thousands of dollars more a year, that may not make that much a year. So it's, it's not going to be, I don't think it's going to be an easy call, whichever way you want to go with it. Of course, that's why we're here, to make calls that aren't easy.
And Tim, the people that are going to be hit hard, when are they going to get the information at this?
That is part of the process in the next phase, is that an education and information process, where there will be community meetings, we'll be with the major players in the community to advise them of what their potential cost could be.
Because they're working their budgets too, and this would be in addition to their budget.
Yes. But that would, I would say through the next six to nine months.
Well, then I'd, I'd take that one off, since we're all going to have to face it in a couple of months.
Can we just put, like, the local food council work session in April?
Yes.
We, we do have to be thinking about if we.
I thought you said April.
We're basically choosing between having.
Who's max to put it on?
Whether to have recreation and all this other stuff, and to pay for that and have the state help, or to, or to not have those other things, and it's less of a burden on the people that can least afford the payoff. That's what we're going to think about, basically.
Well, on the stormwater, yes, well, that's part of it, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. I think that my last one is, we occasionally get windfalls that we don't expect, and I think there's a good chance we'll get another one here to start the next budget cycle. And I don't, and I think that we need to look closely at things for equipment, because I do, as, as cheap as I am, I do think we under-invest in equipment. So that's why I put it up there.
When's the last time that we asked for more information from the garage when it comes time to keeping up at least with our fleets and what pieces of equipment are going in a lot?
Yeah.
And to see, to help us know when we might need to purchase.
And I think we got a fleet, a thingamajig via email with all that stuff, plus the policy. And I went, I went down there and was pretty impressed with what they were doing.
If anything, those, those staff can tell us room and advice, right?
Well, I think they do a lot of times and sometimes we can't afford it and we just have to put it off. I'm just saying as we get windfalls over the years and we occasionally get those windfalls, I think it'd be a good idea to look at equipment when we get them. That's it. I don't know, haven't heard anybody else. Well, I think that's important.
What?
Yeah, I, I would say a one, but just to make, and again, I think it's still just kind of ongoing because you never know. Probably better maintain.
But what, the, the real question is, is do we want to use that to invest in equipment? It's not a when, but it's a what. Equipment versus whatever else.
There may be other versus at that time.
Right.
Might be recreational.
It will likely be a case-by-case basis also.
I just wanted to have that on our radar, because you know, we've been talked, we've talked about a new fire truck, remember? They were trying to get a grant for it. I don't think that came through.
Well, there was years nothing was purchased. You know, the previous commissions made really tough decisions to, to keep the budget without having to raise taxes and they didn't buy anything. You know, so now we're, we're stuck with having to buy equipment and maintaining a fleet that wasn't always maintained to, to a higher level.
Okay. Those are mine.
I guess that man, I, I'll actually look at this, this is kind of condensed version. Business friendly looking, this might be something we're already working on, at least we've worked toward, toward it. You know, with one, if we get more businesses, we, we generate revenue. We're trying to get some concerns from the business owners, you know, what they see. I've heard about a forum, us possibly setting up forums, but I don't know where we are. And I, and I, if forums are too difficult to set up, maybe survey the businesses. Another option is use, using the IT department to request information near the well. I did see on E99's budget, they mentioned a group called Surface Corps of Retired Engineers, and I had never heard of that before. And I said, I'd be interested to see who this group is. But I know this is something we keep saying, but I don't know how much we're doing to make a business.
Our staff has met a number of times in the past probably eight weeks, and we are working on streamlining our development process, working between finance, sanitary, sewer, public works. And we've also scheduled March 31st at 4:00 PM at the Public Works Library. It's the business friendly forum. Rebecca Hall is working with Carmen Inman on the project.
Tim, what are you going to go with?
Have we talked any businesses, actual businesses?
That's the purpose of the forum on March 31st. We're working in concert with the chamber to invite as many people as possible. We're hopeful it's turned out, is good. The format will be where there will be a, maybe a short presentation on some of the issues we've heard and some of the things that we're trying to accomplish. And then allowing attendees will have input cards. We're going to ask them to fill out cards and if they want to be a little bit more anonymous, but we're also going to have staff there. If they can go to the sewer department and talk about potential issues that they run into or to finance or to planning or public works. So all of our departments, at least that are in the development business area, will be available.
Mr. Hanes, KCDC is hitting that. They're supposed to be redoing their website. Now, whether or not that's done is another question. The Chamber of Commerce is trying to push to have a person hired who will facilitate new businesses to come in. So I'm hope, we've got a lot of things to be hopeful about. I don't know how it's going to end up at the end of the day.
And see, now I've actually, you know, I get the emails from the chamber and see what they're doing and they actually talk to some business. That's why I was wondering, when, when we use that term, I want to make sure I'm using the correct one and say, well, we're trying to become more business friendly. Somebody said, okay, what does that mean?
Yeah.
Now I can tell them, we're going to have a forum on the 31st, you know, they've already made contact, because normally we get hit cold. You know, it's normal at Walmart, when something comes up, the last time me and Magistrate Perkins met out at the senior citizen and did a forum, they had some deep questions. Some that, you know, they said, well, I'll get back with you on that one. And some of it, I, I just don't know and I don't want to mention here, but when you go into Walmart, you know, the lane that says, you're supposed to come over this way and the other lanes are turning lane and two lanes come in, they say, who put that sign up there? I don't know. I said, could be the state, you know, and in doubt, blame it on the state. I had to check and get back with you. But anyway, that one will be ongoing, it sounds like we are working that. Now parking, I'm, I'm like, I might just not know, other than the sign, the signage that we're doing. I, I worked out that the true signage, you know, also not only help parking, but it also give an opportunity to, to signage for, to get to other places. Because we keep talking about downtown being a destination, where if they don't know where they're going, they're not going to get there. So I think we're working on that with the sign issue. I've read that in your update.
We received RFPs on a consultant last Friday.
Right now.
And how many did we receive? The commission had authorized an expense of, I think, up to thirty thousand dollars, was it?
Why'd you take this off?
For wayfinding signage for the downtown area. We've got a committee that's working on narrowing down the consultants, the RFPs, and then we'll make a presentation, work session in April.
Yes. Committee's ranking these on Wednesday.
So.
Okay, and it looked like it was kind of interesting. I missed a meeting last week, and that's when, the next one is on alternative transportation. And I wrote the transit needs and routes would require an adjustment with new industry business coming in, transit, high tech, and also existing ones, transportation, if you should take them into account. Yeah, at least three agencies that would be presenting to us in the future concerning this need. One was a veterans group, one was a ready group, and an elders group. And I just heard at lunch today that some group met with you.
Thirteen groups met with us last week.
Right, last week.
Last Tuesday at one or 1:30, we had public works and transit here. There were a number of issues brought up exactly as you provided in your goal. We decided to look at what it would take, first of all, operationally and equipment-wise, what it would take to meet the needs, to serve the industrial park, for example, to serve other areas in our community. And then we're going to get back together and see what type of revenues that we may be able to come up with and serve that particular aspect of the public.
So there's a, there's a, people asking for bus transportation in the county and where the industry's on?
Correct.
Have we done a, I don't want to know very many details, but I, I rant to a lot of people that work at industries. I don't know one that doesn't have a car. So, so we actually talk to people that actually work there to know if there's much of a need for buses running to industrial parks?
I would say these agencies represented anywhere from twelve to twenty-five people who don't have transportation to and from work. The public transportation that we have only goes, I'm told, a quarter mile outside of our city limits.
Right, because it's city.
So we're going to involve the county in some of these discussions as well. We don't have a meeting date set for the next one, but there is some ongoing dialogue at this time. We don't know for sure where it's going to go. It will just depend on resources and foot.
Thank you. And the next one, IT connectivity, of course, we all know that IT crosses all the different divisions and I heard someone today just mentioning, if there are links from the main page, if you go into other pages, it'd be a lot simpler, easier for someone looking for information on it. And I think I heard that, so it sounds like that's also working well. And I've also heard compliments about the planning and building codes, already their use of automation. So I'm hoping that all of the city offices are getting complimented on the, the use of automation. And I just think, I can't put my hand on, you know, I only know the one site, the homepage. If it's not on the homepage, I don't get it. But I'm sure that I just heard something today, you have to know their link, you know, you have to actually know their webpage if they don't have a link for it there. And I just think that's something we should be working toward. And, and as we mentioned, Steve earlier, said a lot of times we can do things better and more efficient through automation. That may not take an actual person, because I, I related it to TurboTax. You know, if you have the right software in there, you can walk through any process. You know, you don't have to be brilliant because they, you know, they have the right question. I'm sure you've heard all the different things and excuses, the, the different people's areas, what they have with themselves, where they, they know that to get this done, they need this. Once you get that, you go here. And I just think, and I think we're supposed to be working toward that way. I think the last session we had, we did something about IT.
Improving IT.
Right, improving IT.
We're still working with IT as a department. But I think one example, Gary, can you share with your recent access now to GIS and some of the issue, the mapping that we didn't have recently?
Yeah, we, sewer data, it's all layers, it's data information. There's three GIS people in Frankfurt, one's in sewer, one's in IT, and one's in public works. Our department, I'm a GIS person, I make layers. But I didn't have all the access to the sewer layers, like where their lines are. And some, but some of it's old. Most of my data is from 2002 or older, but I, but we have met and Bobby finished it Friday, but in all of it, we're still trying to work out who will be responsible for updating the layers and then I'll make me a new centralized map per se for my department. So everyone in my office will have the same map, the same base layers and data. It's all flowing through the same system. I know which ones I'm responsible for, but I'm not sure which one will be responsible for us, so we're still looking at it.
Could I ask, with your permission, Commissioner Hanes, could we, I know we tried to do specific goals and we're trying to do specific ones, but on this IT piece, could we still keep that kind of broad, which is, is just the whole idea of IT? Because I know we're doing a bunch of different things. Like, for example, I think, I think one of the programs the Personnel Department uses, it may be something that Steve has in finance, I mean, they're still working on MS-DOS program. The-
Wasn't that 1980?
There, yeah, there is, we've got an MS-DOS program, I believe, but we've actually converted, everything's converted, but I think sometimes for ease of use-
Sometimes it's worse keeping it.
Somebody's using that to input data, it take, it's quicker for them to input the data.
I understand. And so I'm not saying getting rid of that. I'm just saying that I think there's still a long way to go with putting technology through our organization. I think that will also lead to greater efficiencies and could lower personnel costs and make us do better, because I know that, and so, I think that one needs to stay. And I don't know enough information to give you ten narrow things, but I-
Now, I really liked that whoever did that flooding thing, I mean, that was very detailed. You know, there's one group that briefed us where they can tell you your house is on flood, if, if the wall goes-
Oh, inundation map.
Keep bro-
What?
Ongoing and keep bro.
The last one is improved sidewalk trails and public input. We're getting a lot of input, groups like Walk Back Berkeley, but when you start talking about the sidewalks, also distance, you know, when you see what that was. And I know we have a priority sidewalk list and I haven't gotten it yet because they were updating it, but it comes up when I go to certain meetings. I'm saying, when are we going to work in this current, I hate to say, I don't know. I said, I know that we have a priority, I just haven't seen it yet, but I said, I'll get back with you when I find more information. And I've also been taken out on a few trails that I didn't know existed. And I just wanted to see what I'm looking at as possibilities of the future, when you say, well, you know, we've got some great trails around here and nobody knows unless you're part of a group that does trail. I was not part of that group, but I said, okay, take me and show me. And I even saw a trail that led up to Kentucky State from downtown. Now, it's not improved, you got a couple of tree limbs down, but actually it was a very-
That's the one we're getting ready to do.
Yeah, it was a very steady group.
Did we find out today?
Huh?
Today was the deadline?
For what?
That CSX was supposed to, did we find out?
I did not find out, I just- It sounds like this is one that's already happening, but I guess what I'm looking at, because I've seen these plans, everybody has a plan, and I'm trying to see the connectivity between our sidewalk plans and the things that we're doing. And hopefully we continue to get public input, because what I'm also seeing, we seem to get the same people that's open speech, which is okay, but I wonder if we're missing something. You know, if other people don't care, someone will come down here.
One group you're missing is, there's, there's a, there's a number of neighborhoods that don't want sidewalk.
Yeah.
I live in one.
I do too.
You see, I hope that will be known, because hopefully we're not putting sidewalks where-
Well, they're not, they're not, one of them, where I live, they're not. But I'm just saying there are a number of people that don't want them. I'm not saying they shouldn't get them, I'm just saying they don't want them.
The commission will be receiving a report on three to five-year street and sidewalk program, either in any one day.
Of course, they probably ought to just take that whole side of the street and add a bit of, hang it nicely in the house. Right? That's not a commission.
That's what she thought.
I'm talking about my side, not your side there.
No.
We could take your side then.
You had the kids waiting out there trying to finish, and they said, okay, you can go in now, he's finished.
I love girls, hey.
I do too.
You do.
Oh, you don't want one of those. Those are, those are perfect, you don't want that.
The light should come on. I just sort of summarized public safety would be, I did not, I thought our club was hard, so it wasn't my fault. Public safety, which is, I just sort of summarized here. Public safety was the catch-all for maintaining our levels of police fire, dispatch, emergency management, and looking at any improvements. I don't, I don't know if the chief, if, we have police chief here, the fire chief's not here today, but chief, were you going to have any personnel requests needs? That would be one of the things I was looking at, public safety and equipment for police. Didn't mean to put you on the spot.
Well, no, no, it really goes back to an earlier goal. One you were talking about reducing personnel and things like that, you know, just to get it to a certain, what is the number you want? Is there a sweet spot to be aiming for?
Well, that's what some departments couldn't-
Well, and, and my point is, when you're talking about the output of, of city workers, you know, it, it depends on the workload, you know. It, you know, an office like Steve, who doesn't have, you know, five or six people, you lose two people out of that and they're crippled, you know. Where if I lose one or two people or work shorthanded for a while, we can get the job done temporarily, but at some point in time, people need time off, people need training, we need to go back and look at, at our, our mission, what are we doing? You know, if, if you just throw a number out there, I mean, you know, I want fifty policemen. Well, okay, but there's a certain amount of work that we'll, we'll have to give up if we only have, you know, that number of people. So, you know, there, there are numbers I can live with based on what our workload is, or what our projected workload is. Things are going to change, we may need more people, you know, who knows? It, it just depends. It just depends.
And is your, your workload, does it, your department fluctuate somewhat by season?
Oh, sure, sure. I mean, you know, throughout the year, you get ups and downs, you get different types of calls.
Like, I would think you would have more calls in the spring, summer than you would the fall, winter. I would just think that, but I don't know.
Typically, you do, when there's, when there's more people out, when the kids are out of school, that type of thing. But you also have a different type of call in the wintertime, you have a lot more domestics, alcohol related, things like that. But they may pick up a different, well, even a different amount of manpower. It's not just run around taking reports.
Right.
Then there's, you know, do you have enough staff to devote time to investigation and things like that? So, you know, I, I'm comfortable with the numbers that I have, based on, on what I think our workload is. You know, like any other department head, I, I'll be, I'll be honest with you, I would, you know, more is better. I'd love to have a bigger, I'd love to go back to 71 offices, love to have that. We can do all kinds of stuff. We can be in everybody's neighborhoods, on bikes and segways and whatever. You know, we're a little short-handed now, we can't do that all the time. So, you know, it's just a matter of the priorities.
Well, I'll say, with the police, you know, like, the parade department, they get so much overtime. They work so much, festivals and parades, and people don't realize the manpower when you have a big event. And there are a lot of big events in Frankfurt that people don't realize.
And, and I just hear people, just in general, when I was campaigning, they want to see more visibility of police. So that's one area that I am just, I don't want the 1% to come out of there, absolutely not. Because what I heard all through the campaign was, they want more of you guys on the street, and more patrolling going on.
They, they do, but I'll be honest with you, you cannot afford to put a policeman on every track.
I'm not saying that you can, I'm just saying that if the public's saying they want more, and that's the thing I heard over and over and over again. That is just the one place that I don't think we should be doing this cut. When we're talking about...
But, you know, but, but the truth of the matter is, is, you know, what we do have to look at our workloads, the type of, type of work that we do. And try to come up with a, a balance.
I just, only thing I want on those last three, is, we can start with public safety, where you were going, Mayor, is, for me, that's just too general. You know, I, I, what, what piece of, you know, public safety, when he asked you what are some things, what would be fire, what are some things we're trying to do? I mean, for me, that, that's what I would be looking to either support or not to support, just based on what, how specific it is and what it applies. But, and then as far as the levels of staffing, you know, if we, if we exempt public safety from those levels, we might as well not even have this discussion. Because if you add fire and police together, you're at two-fifths to more of current employees. So, and it doesn't mean that you're taking people off the street, it may be ways to redo, you know, redo it. There may be people in the office that you can do, I don't know those answers. I rely on you and the city manager to figure that out. But I don't think we can say that, you know, we're never going to look at those things. Because then you've, you've closed off so much of your budget, that you're, you're, there's not really much point in going a whole lot further, it's too hard to do.
And if I may, and that's why I ask, is there a number or a sweet spot or a percentage that we're looking at, a goal for work?
I think for me, is, when I, we did this before, we had the officers doing the bike patrol. The number of positive comments we got from the public, residential areas, the business areas that liked that. And then, I know sometimes they would use segways too, but it seemed like it was a great tool for the officers to be in neighborhoods, to get information from people that would share with people on bikes or segways more than they would. An officer who's in a car, that has to stop to get out. And I thought that, I just thought it was a good tool in terms of being on the, I hate to use the word proactive, but a proactive...
Oh, absolutely, it was proactive, it was designed to be proactive.
And for me, making sure, again, as I think Commissioner brought up the fleet thing, making sure that we have that adequate number of vehicles. Because we've decreased the number of vehicles that we were purchasing. We used to be, we got, at one point we were up to 12, then we got to 10, and then we came down to eight. And then it got down to where we took money out of the forfeit, asset forfeiture fund. But just look at, for me, like, the broad public safety topic, because it's so big. But for me, maintaining our staffing levels, at least where they are, and if not, being able to increase them due to other budgetary issues. At least maintain where we are, and not go backwards. But stay at least where we are, but try to improve and increase staffing to where we can do more of the community, being officers in the community. Which I think makes a huge, huge difference. And I don't think police typically has the, the most expensive vehicles you're going to have are going to be SUVs and regular cars. But you're going to go to all the...
No, it, it's your typical patrol vehicle. But, you know, they're, they're equipped with video cameras, which are $6,500 each. Laptop computers, which are $4,500, you know, radios and lights and things like that are another $4,000 almost. So, you know, the equipment, you know, the equipment being equipped, it adds up when you do each one. I think we're at a pretty good, pretty good spot. Just one point, and I probably shouldn't even say this, because it may throw a little fuel on the fire. You were talking about the neighborhood patrols, and that was the emphasis of community policing. And those were the days when the federal government were giving you money on the cops grants, you know. And we took, did advantage of that and increased our force by, by fine for several cops grants. But as those grants expire, then the city is responsible for maintaining those spots. So I think we're kind of, we're kind of the level now where we're, we're in the ballpark here, so...
Well, and for the fire department, I don't, I don't know what their needs are right now. I know there's, we need an aerial.
We will be bringing the list of equipment to you, again, either in April or in May. We're working on the budget as we speak. And we have a list of equipment and building space that we would like to improve.
But I mean, that's why I was saying, I just put a general topic instead of trying to break it down. Which I could break it down, I just thought today we would just try to talk it down. And then the support for local firms and businesses, again, goes back to if we can support buying things from our local businesses. I know we talked, I think I talked with finance, I don't know if I talked to Steve or anybody else, but I know, like, most of our local office supply companies have either gone out of business or just, do any of them do mail order? I know we have Cardinals, but I don't, I don't know who else we have. Just things that we can buy, if we can...
You can try to buy locally.
If we can try, and then we can also join with other...
We've talked about it. I don't think we're reselling any of them.
And then get them to fill it out.
They need to fill that form out.
Give them the...
We didn't have a lot of folks taking advantage of that.
No, we didn't.
And maybe we can, maybe we can push it, and maybe some of them aren't interested, I know beforehand, some of them just, it wasn't cost effective for them. But then again, looking at our architectural and engineering firms, when, especially, I guess, Sewer Department's going to have the most high-end things right now. But to try to help our local firms out. And if they can partner with, with somebody that has ways to do that, then, again, would be helpful.
So you're just talking about us, you're not talking about citizens?
Well, I was talking about, we do city projects.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm for that.
And I know we've all, I think...
We're even like purchasing the equipment.
Exactly, you know, I know the...
But sometimes you can't do it because of price.
Or they don't have the state commission.
Right.
I think that's a one, we're doing that anyway, but I think we need to make sure we're on the...
Just to continue to remind you. And then on the recreational activities, that just meant to continue working on what we're doing.
What's ongoing?
Ongoing. Aquatic center and indoor consumption, you know, working on that to see.
You're right.
What?
That approach should make this work.
The what?
Because somehow people are talking about it.
Well, I guess that's going to probably, that will primarily be in the budget, I guess, unless y'all disagree.
I think that's kind of a picture.
How you want to phrase it?
I, I think it's going to be, we're going to look at what the department's asking. My point on there was just, I would support making sure we have adequate funding for those departments.
I think there are two officers on that next move. They're playing two officers.
Oh, okay.
Mayor, is this like something, is this something that would not be like for the city, it would just be the chamber? But back to your support for local, would it be weird to like have links on our website? That would be like a bi-local sort of section, where, I mean, this might not really be appropriate for city. But I was just thinking, if we had a link or something there where somebody might go and see what's available in the city under certain categories of things? Or is that not something we should do?
I don't know if the chamber provides some of that, but not every business is a member of the chamber.
The problem you said, no.
I was going to say, part of that also meant like, that also tied in with the business friendly stuff, which is ongoing. So I knew that was, this was just as a reminder.
Like, maybe like if businesses came here, and we can talk about this next week, like, and they wanted to like post something in a section of our website? And I'm not an IT person, but like if they wanted to post like something in there, that like, when you went to our website, you could click on this, and you might put in a thing in the search bar, like, I want to buy faucets or something. And it takes you to all the places in Frankfurt where you can go. Like, if businesses wanted to participate in that, do you see anything? I don't know, maybe that's not a good idea.
Talked about trying to do that.
Mr. Hennings talked about that exact thing.
I had tried for the past couple of years trying to get information. So if, like, for instance, if you want an electrician, you could just search it and be able to find your electrician.
I think that would be good, then somebody else...
And that it would just be alphabetical, it's not that anyone, you're not...
We do have, we do have a listing out there that shows all the businesses that have a license. Doesn't necessarily tell what they do, because, you know, we don't know everything.
But like, if your emphasis...
But we do have a list.
But if your emphasis is to like...
The chamber does, man. Definitely took care of it. And there is a listing out there.
Like if it's, you know, like run a bi-local...
The chamber's...
A link, bi-local, and then...
Got that.
Well, if they've got it, that's... That's it?
All right, Tim, what's our next step?
We've got some time, we've got some direction. We'll summarize this, we'll provide, hopefully, maybe in the news, what we've got, and if you could give us some information.
I know we can't talk this very well.
Recreation is right up there on the list.
Under, under building demolitions.
Yeah, that's a good one.
As Commissioner Roach was talking about, we still have the Y, and I know that expedite that. There was a request that we were going to put that on at the April 14th work session. But I believe they're not able to be here on the 14th due to one of their...
I got an email.
With the financial group people.
Yeah, but I guess I can have it, but what's the other, the 21st, you know what I'm saying?
I'm wondering, could we move our work session? And maybe you don't want to do that, because if we move it, then it becomes...
I think we should have a regular work session, because there might be things we need to know about that we forget to put on there. Don't you think?
We could have a very full work session with budget, with retreats, with a number of things. Our work session would be pretty full.
Will you be involved with their presentation and their discussion of the OY on the 21st?
What about me?
Commissioner Roach, underneath the demolition of buildings, talking about, pardon, the OY being one of those with their discussion. However, they can't make the 14th of next month, but they could make the 21st with all of their architect and whoever else was with them on the 21st.
I'm not forgiving them another chance, but if y'all are, that's all right.
So the question is, can...
Free on the 21st.
Can we have...
So they want a special, they want a meeting?
Just another special.
They're not available on the 14th, which is a normal work session.
I say, let them pick a date, and then they set the date, and then if they don't show up, then the ball is truly in their court.
And they pick the 21st, that's what...
They pick the 21st. That's a, that's a special day, I don't have, my child has my phone.
No, you're right. I'm not a big fan, like I said, on the special meetings, or having a special meeting just for...
Not either, but I do want to discuss this property and find out where we are in the timeline.
And as always, I've always said, especially me, if the rest of the group wants to meet, and I obviously will show up.
Well, Mayor, there is the option of if you wanted to do it. I mean, you remember I said, one of my goals is to get this issue dealt with, done, finished after we're all at the table. And we all leave the table with nothing else left to say. And that's one of my goals, that you don't see it up there, but I said it across the hall. You know, I still say, make them set the date. And if you can't, I know, but if we can't do, Mayor doesn't like special meetings, and if we can't do a special meeting, make them pick the work session, but put it with, in the next month or so.
Well, you got two of us that don't agree to the 21st.
Well, I can do it, I can do the 21st.
So my, and I guess my question, I had said that I don't think y'all want to do it, was if we moved the April 14th work session to the 21st.
Be too big.
But, again, once you do that, you...
Well, you know, if we did, if we did them in the afternoon and took a break...
We're not going to be here the 28th anyway.
We're not?
We're going to be here the 28th.
Okay, so you want to make the 21st the regular meeting?
What's the 28th?
That was our hope, yes, that was our hope.
Okay.
Why are we not going to be here the 28th?
We're not going to be here. And y'all can go ahead without us, but we're not going to be here.
No, no, we won't, no, we won't, go ahead. Do we, I don't want to...
Okay, so then we can make, so the Y would be on the regular, that's enough to reschedule meetings.
So the Y would be on the regular session on the 21st, that's fine. All right, I'm fine with that.
There's going to be a special meeting.
So the 21st is...
All we can do is deal with...
The vote meeting is the 21st?
Voting meeting is on the 21st. That's a special meeting with the Y and C and presentation, correct?
That's okay for everybody.
Well, could I make a suggestion?
Which means we could vote.
Let me make a suggestion, that's the vote meeting. So could we possibly have them come in at, their team at three or four, to have a work session and hear them vote across the hall? So that we, I think we're all more comfortable around here dealing with the details of everything.
They also said they want it to be on TV.
They can present, but can we, can we have, can we have a, can we have a, you know, a work meeting with them before we go across the hall? And if they want to present, present, but then we vote over there. It's just an idea. You know, when we're sitting over there, it seems like we're talking out there rather than to each other. And I think that we really need to do this, we need to really get everything out there and, and deal with every bit of it, so we can move on. I don't know, it's just my suggestion.
Okay, we can, I don't know what time they were planning, they may be depending on having a...
Do they have a time?
They don't have a time.
I don't care.
This is only in the scope of a special meeting call. I'm sorry, what'd you say, Mrs. Rissell?
They did not give us a time that I'm aware of, but I will contact Martha Gray today, and see if she can give us the time.
Let me ask one other thing. And I, like you all, think that we've spent an ordered amount of time on this issue already, and want to get it done with one way or the other. I would also ask, and I guess want to make sure that we're open to any kind of discussion at this meeting. Because the way we've got it structured is they're bringing a team in here. But that doesn't answer, I would argue, a number of nitty-gritty questions. So is everybody comfortable with going ahead and asking those nitty-gritty type questions?
Yeah, in here.
During that time.
While they're here, so we get everything answered.
All right, I'm fine with that.
I would hope they present before we get to nitty-gritty.
I'm fine with that too.
The city manager, the city solicitor, you know, had, had a sheet of things.
That's the kind of questions I want to ask.
Because if you ask those first, you know, their presentation will probably shift. Rather than give their presentation, so they've given everything they've done.
Okay.
Then, you know, the solicitor had some questions that he sent out through email.
know, the solicitor had some questions that he sent out, you know, and they were pretty detailed, you know, by that point, you know, we'd have all the information on the table.
And then, we would make a decision that night, is that what you're saying?
Well, I'm all for that, and whether we do or not, I'm skeptical. We can.
We can, if we're ready, okay.
I'm hoping you all are ready, but I'm skeptical.
Well, I mean, I think that's, that's the time, I think, we need to get everybody's questions answered, so everybody's comfortable with whichever way we swing.
I'm fine with that, they will not have an answer to a number of the questions.
Well, and that will answer our question.
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
Perfect, that'll answer us.
Sorry, actually...
Does that turn muddy, so it clears mud?
She gave up.
Yeah, it is, but I'm thinking about how to fix it.
The twenty-first?
You could have two meetings, or you could, well, nevermind. There's a lot on that night, you said, isn't there?
Sorry, Commissioner Roach, you just made a motion.
Well, can I, I need to ask the question.
You might want to make a second question.
It's ready yet.
I, I need to ask a question.
That's what I said, I just wanted to, okay, sorry.
I need to ask the question, because Ms. Noonan's not clear, and I would like to be clear before I leave exactly what we're going to be doing, is Mr. Zissou going to contact the Grays, and you're going to ask or do what?
I'll ask them for a time.
Okay.
Time that they can be available.
Could you ask them for a time within a couple of hours of the regular vote meeting?
Yes.
If that's what everybody is okay with?
Then eight, three o'clock, things to work with, Commissioner.
Does that work, Mayor?
Oh, absolutely. I want to, I'm, I think if, whatever you need to do to make sure that we hear what their plan is, probably.
And I'll be ready to second that motion, so to make sure that we're meeting on the fourteen or twenty-first.
Yep.
And no meeting on the twentieth, twentieth meeting is canceled.
Okay. About the next one.
Thank you.
Of April.
Appreciate it. A second.
Did you, he withdrew, but he needs to make it again.
I'll make a motion with your...
Second.
Mr. Val, is any discussion, see them all in favor, stick on a say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like say no.
He hesitates, he blows.